Ron, can you please mute yourself?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you mute yourself?
Yes, I'm trying to find the mute button. On, would you turn that down? Until I find the mute.
We can mute you. So we muted you, so we'll just have to unmute you, or you'll have to unmute yourself to talk.
They're moving second, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll get right into the reports. Chief, want to be up first?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. You guys got your stat sheets in your packets? Okay, there's no questions on that for the last time. Operations are running.
Any questions for the chief?
It's not working out great for me because I'm not driving. But he seems to like it.
Appreciate your service to our community.
I go for it, Chief. Everybody's okay. Okay, thanks Chief.
You're welcome.
Hello, everyone. So basically, the beaters are still moving along. And they're going to be pretty much on schedule. It was a little slow last week, it was only one guy here, so it slowed down a little bit, but it's still installed some meters, so that's going to turn out pretty well. Got ahold of Fire Mountain Farms today, this morning, they're ready to go. I've already got the trailer loaded and ready to haul the first load of solids out first thing in the morning. There, we're hauling right out of the front ridge, right out of my Alaska. He's actually got a scale right there on the farm, so we don't even have to pay for the scale, but that worked out pretty good. The locks over at the boat lock are failing, so we had to turn them off. I don't know, you may have heard about that. ABC Lock was scheduled to come today. They called, they got hung up at Woodlock, they will be here tomorrow to tear into those, see what they could do, if they could fix them. But if not, then we will probably have to purchase lots, time loss on that, and basically, that's about it.
Any questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. Michelle?
So just want to say that the mayor and I did meet with district court representatives about our contract after we held a meeting between Shelley, the chief, myself, and the mayor, and they agreed to the changes that we've requested, so as soon as we get a new contract, I'll have that presented before you guys, just for the recommendation for the mayor to sign it. There's a letter in your packet about the food bank. It's so funny, because they've had like all this stuff outside of the food bank piling up, like household items, and so we're getting a letter to read, ready to write, and then I had missed a lot of last month. And when I came back, I'm like, oh, we need to get that letter. So I went out to take pictures to add to the letter, and most of the stuff outside was cleaned up. I'm like, that's weird, but the inside still is atrocious. So we have not heard a response back from them yet, but I want you guys to be aware, you could see what kind of shape is going on inside the food bank. It's just, it's a huge fire hazard. They've got rotting food, it starts smelling into City Hall, mainly into my office, and you know, it's just the purpose of the food bank is not to have all this household items either. I mean, that could be some other parts somewhere else, and so I'm asking them to basically get this under control. It's, it's a mess, it's been going on too long, and I know it's a lot of very elderly people, is there volunteers there, but they're going to have to try to reach out to other organizations or something, it's been going on far too long, we've allowed it to happen far too long. Otherwise, we're going to have to ask them to vacate, just because, like you said, it is a huge fire hazard. It's not sanitary, it's unsafe, you know, so we need to get this under control. So I did write them a letter, waiting on response on that. This is the chief's last meeting, but not his last day. So we are planning on having a little get-together on his last day, the 30th, which is a Thursday, so he can't take vacation or comp or any other thing that day. We'll have a little luncheon to celebrate, so if anybody does want to come to that, you're more than welcome to. And...
What time is that, Michelle? 11:30?
11:30 noon, yeah. Yeah, I think that is it. Just working on a lot of things, especially the water rights issues and things like that, so got a lot going on. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle. That's all the reports we have. Let's move on to public hearing with Kelly Johnson. Public, special presentation.
Are you here with the mask on, isn't she? All right, is there anyone participating virtually?
Yes, there is one that won, he's got this hat.
Okay, great, all right, well, good evening. It's really nice to be here, I'm Kelly, and I am the Centralia City Councilor, and this is my fourth city council meeting in just over a week, so I'm actually having fun going and seeing local government all over our county. I'm here to share with you the work around the housing summit that I'm convening with Commissioner Swope and invite you to participate. Commissioner Swope would have been here, but he is homesick, you may have heard about that in the paper. So he'll be back in the saddle soon. But the Housing Policy Summit is an opportunity for us as local elected officials to come together and learn about the housing situation in Lewis County, and then talk about any policy approaches that we might want to take in our own jurisdictions, and then also that we might want to do collectively. And so I know you've got the presentation in your packet, if you want to follow along, you can. The reasons for it are many, and I don't know how much has impacted your jurisdiction, but in Centralia, this has been a hot topic for several months. And I was sitting in your seat, being asked to make policy decisions, and realizing that there's a lot of information that I don't have. This is not my area of professional expertise, and felt like I needed to do a lot more education so I could make informed and good decisions. And I thought maybe others could benefit from it, and Commissioner Swope agreed to co-convene this with me. So some of the issues we're facing is that we have a 1.1-month supply across Lewis County. And when I say Lewis County, I'm talking about the geography of Lewis County, not county government and unincorporated Lewis County, but across all of our jurisdictions. Normally, you want about a four-month supply. So what that means is if no new housing units came on the market, we'd be out of housing in a month, and no one else would be able to find housing, so it's really tight. The vacancy rate is low, you can see that in there. In the last nine years, there's been a 69%, 69% decrease in supply, and correlated 127% increase in the median home price. And we're seeing this all over, I'm sure your home values have gone up, and you've talked to constituents who are having trouble either staying in their home, finding a home, affording a rental, et cetera. So we are faced with this, this is a national crisis, nationally, we're about 5.5 million units short, and even if we were to throw a bunch of strategies at it nationally, they predict that it's about 10 years to get out of it, so this is here to stay, and we need to be proactive so that our county is as minimally impacted as possible. So what we're doing, as I mentioned, is we're inviting all jurisdictions to come together. We were going to say, everyone who's interested, please come, that was my original vision and goal. But because of the COVID surge, we are limiting participation so that there's fewer people in the room. People can still participate virtually, but we're asking each council to send one or two elected officials. And then some councils have like a city manager role, or a community development person that may want to come as well. So if there's a staff person that makes sense, they can join also. The purpose, as I mentioned, is to educate ourselves, high focus on education, and then do some discussion. We don't have that much opportunity to cross, talk across jurisdictions, so this is an opportunity to talk about, what are you doing? What are the challenges you're facing, and how can we work together? Specific things that we're going to cover is that we have commissioned a Lewis County Housing Situation Assessment. So some of the statistics I just shared are early reports from that assessment, we'll have a much more robust report shared at the meeting provided by Burke Consulting, who specializes in local government and housing. We are going to talk about the housing pipeline, what is it, what are the different elements, and the role of different types of housing. So while affordable housing, or low-income housing, or homelessness will be a part of the conversation, this is not focused solely on those issues, because the whole housing pipeline includes market rate ownership, and also high-end houses, which as you know, provide the tax revenue. So all of this together is this solution, and we're looking at the whole thing, not any particular segment. And then we will have somebody from the Washington Association of Counties to talk about the policy toolkit, which I don't know about you, but for me, I was very interested in that, it's like, well, if I want to help and make a difference with these issues that are being presented, what are the policy levers that I can pull? I needed a better understanding of that. So I talked a little bit about the housing pipeline, you've got a graphic in there that shows that the pipeline is all of these things. And for example, when you have more supply on the middle-class homeownership, then you have more availability in your lower-income housing, and you have more availability for people to move into housing. So the entire pipeline has to be addressed if we want a meaningful solution. Just carving out and looking at one piece of it isn't enough. So to that end, we are inviting some of the social service providers to have input. Some will be there, but we're also inviting realtors and developers who are looking at other types of housing to be there. Outcomes, why are we doing this, what are we hoping to achieve? You can see the list, but what we're looking for is to just increase our collective knowledge so that we can talk across jurisdictions and use words in the same way, so that we have an understanding of those terms and what the situation is. We want to understand policy toolkit, we want to discuss our policy goals together. Sometimes, if one jurisdiction, I think Chehalis and Centralia is a good example, because we're geographically so close, that if Chehalis set some policy goals, that could impact Centralia, because housing, people move across those two areas. So what are the various policy goals people have, and how are those working together? And then build relationships, I'm hopeful that one of the things that could come out is maybe a cross-jurisdictional task force that meets on some sort of regular cadence to actually work on some collective policies. I don't have an agenda in mind of specific policies I'm wanting to see adopted. I'm still in the learning mode, I have some ideas, as you all might as well. But really, my goal is to get people talking and working together, not to promote a particular policy outcome. And then the time and date, we're going to meet on October 14th, that's a Thursday. We're meeting from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Community Events Center at the Fairgrounds. You may have seen some early information that it was at Bethel, that was our original plan, when we were going to do the big event, but we're skinning it down, and that event center will allow us to have a nice, big rectangle that we can sit at and be socially distanced, and it'll still be available for virtual streaming and participation. We are following the Open Public Meetings Act requirements, because we will likely have multiple county commissioners there. But that also means that public can attend, but it's not a public hearing, we don't expect to make decisions at the summit. We expect to be talking together, and decisions would be brought back to your local jurisdiction to make here. That's it for the rundown, questions? Reactions?
I think housing, I mean, for sure, down in South County, it's, you know, a pretty hot issue. And it's, you know, as soon as houses go up, they're, they're filled, so, yeah. Having some talk about it, I think is wise, for sure.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah.
Can I, can I just ask a real quick question? Do we have somebody in mind that we were thinking about sending?
I would like to take some recommendations, if anybody would like to volunteer, that'd be fine.
I would volunteer, I'm very interested in this particular issue.
Eric, Eric would like to volunteer? How many would you like, as many as possible, or? One to two? Okay, we got it, okay, thank you.
And if there are more than that that want to attend, we'll, we'll follow up with like an invite to the two of you to forward on, but if more of you want to attend, send that list, and then if we have room, we'll add others in. So as full a house as possible.
Well, right now, we got two good representatives, so I think, pretty sure they'll give the information back to us.
All right, thank you for your time, appreciate it, have a good evening.
Sorry, I gotta repeat all that, yeah? Yeah, well, we met with Sam, Michelle and I did, last week, a couple days ago, and we had questions, he had questions. We had answers, he had answers, and everything that came out of it was all good, so my recommendation as the mayor would be to recommend Sergeant Sam Patrick as our new chief. Any comments or questions? Or anything?
You, you come to this with your own free volition? Okay, all right.
Of the appointment for the mayor's
Okay, I make
recommendation.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of Sergeant Sam Patrick for Chief of Police of Toledo, Washington.
Second.
They're moving second, any more discussions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ron.
My biggest question is, does he see an immediate increase? Did you, I assumed you discussed the salary package, and I would think that we would have the same package that we'd have for John, because of the year's service, but did he receive an initial increase, and then is that something that we should, I should even ask about, but I'm just kind of concerned that if we give a promotion, that there would be, there would be something, but I'm also concerned that we would give everything that that particular position would anticipate being paid.
So yes, Ron, with that position, and with Sam's credentials, he would be going in at the same level as the current Chief of Police, and this appointment would begin on October 1st, and so everything would be active as of October 1st. So Sam's been with the city for several years, so he doesn't have to start over on vacation or anything like that, although it would be nice for the budget, but he will keep, you know, all that he currently has, and then
And that's, and that's fine, I, I didn't know whether or not we had something that was based on longevity of service and type of stuff like that. And obviously, he would, I'm just concerned, first of all, that he would get some increase, but on the other hand, I, I didn't know if there were set formats in the state that we, we follow, and when it comes to compensation, or whether or not we just make a decision arbitrarily, and that's all.
Yeah, it's based off of our budget, which, which is set by the city council every year, so the state has no authority at all to let, tell us how we're going to, you know, what the pay scale is or wages. The only authority is that we have to belong to the state retirement system, which Sam already does. So it's the law enforcement officers and firefighters, and so everything would basically stay the same. The mayor and I wanted him to take a decrease in pay, but he wasn't admirable to that, so I guess we have to increase his pay as a chief.
Okay, that's, that's fine, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so this is in the form of a motion, and we've already had a question on it, and discussion on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number two, on a new business, the liquor license renewed, Chimmy's Mexican restaurant, you all have that in your packet. I entertain a motion for that one, please.
I make a motion that we approve the liquor license of Chimmy's Mexican restaurant here in town.
They're here a second. Okay, it's been moved in second, any more discussion?
Have we ever had any problems?
No, we have not any problems. I know, chief, nothing, Sam, nothing. Okay, we'll vote on it, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number three, the mobile food vending. Everybody's got that in your packet, take a look at that sheet, if you haven't. There's lots of little, there's lots of things in this.
So this is something that the Planning Commission, you guys kind of tasked them with this project, and so they've had a couple workshops, and then working really diligently on, on this. There's lots of information on here, and so this is what they would like to recommend. Eric Hayes is here as our Planning Commission Chair, so if there is questions, I'm sure that he would be able to answer them also. You know, it's pretty cut and dry, we kind of really plagiarized some other cities to get to what we kind of need here. I know that the, with the Planning Commission, their biggest concern was that you can't bring a food cart in, which is near a brick and mortar business that's selling the same type of food. So if, you know, like Chimmy's is a good example, so with a mapping that they have planned out, if a food cart wanted to come in over by the boat launch, or something, that's with, that's too close, they would not be able to sell tacos, or something like that. But it's also if there's a restaurant in town or somewhere, and they just don't want to have food carts around them, it's not like they could just add a bunch of stuff to their menu, it has to be like a main menu item. So if you have somebody that's selling hamburgers and french fries, but they have, you know, Hot Pocket pizzas on their menu, that wouldn't, the Hot Pocket pizza's like, not like a main menu item, it's the hamburgers and, you know, french fries. So a pizza food cart could go within 150 feet of that. Obviously, Thursday Market is exempt from all these regulations, so as they move around to the two different air areas that they do, depending on the year, they would be able to have, like, vendors for that day only, for Thursday Market Day. And then the other one would be, you know, Cheese Day. If there's vendors for Cheese Days, they wouldn't, you know, have to adhere to these rules. So if, like I said, if you have any questions, I think Eric Hayes would be able to answer them.
My question would be, where would this be located on Station 1?
There's a map?
Right, but I'm just saying, that's a busy street. What are you talking about? It's located by Donna's? Yeah.
Yeah, I was
That was my only question I had the whole time, is how that's going to work. This would be by, on Ramsey, by across the health clinic.
Yes, on Ramsey Way, here's kind of what we envisioned, is on Sunday, Ramsey is pretty empty of the street, and Lewis County has, Lewis County does a food cart day at the somewhere, I haven't been there, I want to go there to, to check it out, but near the fairgrounds or some such thing, they do a food cart get-together. And our thought was, it would be kind of nice if we could attract that for Sundays, and create a Food Cart Sunday in Toledo, because we don't have a lot of food vending going on, we have a lot of traffic that goes through there, and it's just kind of a fun thing that maybe we could do, so the thought is, that could be a thing, so that's why Ramsey was included in that. But I, yeah, we, and we definitely tried to keep it away from the other businesses so that we're not impacting the people who have made a brick and mortar commitment to the town, yet also allow people to come in in a more transient way.
We're looking at Sundays and Mondays, then?
Yes, potentially, but Mondays, maybe, you know, maybe not wholesale, but I could envision somebody parking in front of Donna's place on a Sunday, because they're, you know, that where, where it's straight driving, I wouldn't think that we'd want anything near the businesses that are open.
Right.
Yeah.
That was my only concern, yeah.
And the other thing that's in here is there'll be like 10 designated spots, or 10 parking places, that a food cart could get a permit, like a parking permit, to be able to be there. And so we would sell only 10 a year. Excuse me.
And so we also do have control of it in that regard, they do have to come get the permit, and so we'll, we can, I guess Michelle's crew can manage that.
Sorry, does that 10 a year also include Cheese Days, because of the vendors that go, okay, all right.
No, Cheese Day, oh my gosh, Cheese Days and Thursday Market is totally exempt from this. If Thursday Market were to all of a sudden say, okay, we're going to be open Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we would take a, you know, hard look at this and changing some things, possibly, but it's only Thursday.
When I was reading this, I thought it was an excellent piece of work. Certainly a very good starting point that we can put into motion, and then if we have difficulties arise, then obviously, we can make the appropriate adjustment. But I thought it was a, I was really impressed at the, at the piece of work that was available.
You can thank Michelle in Vancouver for that.
So Eric, these are the only four spots here highlighted on our map?
Yes, and then businesses are also open to host food trucks if they wanted, so if the IG, if the food store wanted to put one in, or there's another gentleman who's talking about the, behind the real estate, the new real estate there's another gentleman who's talking about the, behind the real estate, the new real estate building, that lot back there.
Okay.
So, I mean, on this, on this informational sheet that has like the whole matrix on the required permits and approval, that third page in, it kind of talks about whether it's a sidewalk vending unit in the public right of way versus a mobile food unit in a public right of way property or a mobile food unit on private property that's temporary and a mobile food unit in parks and specialty event places. So it kind of spells out all the information on, you know, if it's on private property versus public property, established business, all of that.
Motion on this one?
Yeah, motion to go forward and put this into ordinance form.
I saw move.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, oh.
Move in second and any more discussion on it? Let's vote on it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Hey, Michelle, with the park attendant, should I go on a new business, unfinished or other business?
You could do new business.
New business?
Yeah, since you skipped your report.
Okay, what I've got for a report on the park attendant is, he's been sick, he's had operations, he just went in for another minor operation last Friday. My concern is his health, number one, and I don't, I don't know if we can physically come out of this any of the better, but I want to inform the council to have their input on this discussion because it's going to come down to the wire of me asking him to vacate or stay on and jeopardizes health, and I don't want to do that.
So to kind of add to the mayor's dilemma here, I mean, it is a hard decision, Rick's been with us for so many years and, you know, he's done a good job when, you know, he was in good health. He's been in really poor health for several years now, unfortunately, and the way we set up the contract, it was very open-ended too. We could, you know, relieve him of his services at any time, but it was very open-ended. And Rick has been unhealthy, for instance, we just had the Bluegrass Festival in the park and, you know, he was not able to do anything, he had had surgeries at that point and stuff, so we had to hire somebody to come in and do all the cleaning for that and we paid, you know, over $450 for that, for that weekend. And they did an excellent job though, I mean, we have had a lot of compliments about it. And the job just takes a lot and with Rick's age and health, he's just incapable of doing it and I think it's too much for us to ask him to even do because of these circumstances, so you know, with the mayor's getting as, we would like to ask him to vacate, the mayor's checked, he has other family members that he could go stay on their property too, so it's not like we're just kicking him to the curb and say sayonara. I mean, he's done a lot for the city for many years, and so then we want to get into a new contract with somebody that's only for a year too. So that will be brought forth to you guys when it's done. We're still trying to develop that, so we do a good job, kind of like, you know, Ron had mentioned him with the food cart, it looks great and when you start having little things that need to be tweaked, you tweak them. So this is going to be the contract that will be, need to be tweaked quite a bit, so I think, I think it's time, I know it's hard on the mayor because they are good friends, it's hard on a lot of people, but his health just is not capable of keeping up and we cannot ask him to do the type of things that need to be done there.
I mean, we have to think two ways, in my opinion, it's like as much as we want this to be an emotional decision, we kind of have to take the emotions out of it because it is an asset to the city and you know, if he's not able to perform his duties, then it brings the park down and I've heard that quite a bit. And so, you know, it's not, it's not about, not, yeah. It's not an emotional issue at this point, it's what's best for him, you know, is not being front, you know, the main person at the park, he's, he's put his time in and done so much for the city and so, yeah, I think, I think you're right to have him vacate, so.
Ron, you got your hand up?
Yeah, the one, the one thing that I thought was very important if we do ask him to vacate is that we give him a definite time limit and give him something that's appropriate and made it possible, but then on the other hand, maybe spell out some kind of consequences that we would, we would have to move you if necessary, but I think that the biggest thing is that you wanted to give him two weeks or a month notice rather than saying we want you out right now type of thing.
I agree. Yes, I agree with that too, Ron, because of a long time friendship, we have him and the diligence that he's done for our city and our park, I'm not going to just kick him out the door tomorrow, I'm going to give him time to get everything and I have talked to him seriously about relatives, he's got four relatives in Rochester area and one of them has a trailer park. So that's a possibility, I don't know how true it is, but I kind of gave him a heads up before and that's been more than a couple weeks ago, to kind of be on the lookout of maybe moving in a kind of roundabout question and answer day I had with him. So he's got an idea that's what's coming. Like I said, his health is number one in my book and he's lost relatives and family members already and that's enough's enough, but I don't want to see him go downhill anymore either.
The unit he lives in, is that his?
Pardon me?
The unit he lives in on the park, is that his?
Yes, it is. That was given to him by the Lions Club. They found that for him many, many, many years ago. Yeah, I did.
If you guys want to set a timeline like Ron had referred to, you could do that in a motion, and other than that, I, you know, I think we've kind of set things in place right now, so that would be the only thing, is if you wanted to set a timeline.
And I'm kind of, to enter, enter that conversation also, I kind of did it now because the weather's still good, but I mean, I don't want a day or two, I'd like a week or two or whatever you guys decide. Can you help me out with this one?
My suggestion, Mr. Mayor, would be that we don't set a deadline unless we don't have a definite date that he's going to be gone by when we meet next time. Then we could set a deadline, but at this point in time, it actually is less probably easier to take if we just go and say the council feels that so it's time and not give him a set time, because if we give him a set time, then it's, actually will appear more harsh than than we certainly want to appear. So we can wait until next council meeting and if he isn't moved by then or if he doesn't have definite timeframe that he is going to move, then I would suggest that we probably would go ahead and, and take some appropriate motion or something.
Okay, did everybody hear that? That sounds good to me too. Just wait till next meeting? Two weeks? Does that sound okay, council? Okay, let's move on. Unfinished business, ordinance number 766, Amending Toledo Land Development Code, second reading.
Do you still have water leak reduction?
That was taken off.
Taking that off the agenda, Ron.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's some questions.
I'm sorry, Ron. Forgot to say that one. The ordinance, amended the City of Toledo Land Development Code, ordinance number 766. I'll entertain a motion for that.
Let's see, I can't even find it.
I will go move.
I'll second it.
Been seconded, any more discussion? We'll take a vote on it. All those in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? Motion carries. Okay, no, nothing else, unfinished business, other business, COVID-19 updates. Michelle, I did hear from my sister who contacted Gary's girlfriend who said that they got him his temperature controlled now, so his temperature quit rising and, but they still got him sent along the ventilated machine down into hospital in Vancouver, and he's not out of the woods yet, but at least they got the temperature back to normal.
Yeah, there's a really good, I don't know if you call it a commentary or interview on KELA that was done with his wife Bobby Barnes and also his daughter Sheena and so if I, you know, if you guys get a chance to listen to that, it really is an emotional interview, but you could really hear it in their voices and, but basically how, you know, there is little progress, but there's little setbacks too and it's just a long process, so it sounded like he had maybe an infection going on that they had to get figured out and help his body with that, so. As far as COVID-19, I mean, new mandates coming down every day, so just kind of follow things along, see what's going on, numbers are up. The mayor, Gary Stamper, both are, you know, examples that the vaccine's not the only answer, I mean, it doesn't always work, but maybe their symptoms weren't as bad, maybe they are, you know. Depends on who you want to listen to and what science you want to follow, but numbers are up, obviously in the county of both vaccinated and unvaccinated people. As far as the city goes, there has been no mandates that city personnel has to have the COVID vaccine. I'm just kind of following everything along due to the fact that we do get federal dollars, so I don't know if that's going to come down at one point if we accept federal dollars or something like that. So just, you know, keeping up with it and following it along. The other thing, not COVID related, but Councilwoman Forga has been moved out of ICU into a neuro unit and they will probably be admitting her to some type of other full-time facility out of the hospital. She is talking, isn't making a lot of sense in conversation, but she is talking and more cognitive of what is going on around her, so. Keep her in your thoughts.
Thank you, Michelle.
I might comment that, I mean, I hope you can hear me okay, I'm in a rural mountain county in Idaho and COVID is, the majority, the majority of the new cases admitted to the hospital are children. So that's something that just really came as a shock to us. This particular county, because it's in a more conservative area of Idaho, is not a highly vaccinated group of people, but the children, it would make a difference anyways because it would be available to them, but the majority of the new cases are young children.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, moving on to public input, anything from the public would like to say, now's the time to say it. Go ahead and step up to Mike, please.
My name is Andrew Dutton, I live at 182 Twin Peaks Drive, Toledo, Washington. I'm here today to voice my support in making Toledo a constitution sanctuary where we support the constitution as it's written, protect citizens from the unconstitutional mandates that are coming down left and right as was just stated. So that's, that's my big concern. My second one, I'm just kind of curious what's going on with the industrial development that's happening up and down I-5, I see a lot of the land getting bought up, industrial complexes going in. So I don't have much of a voice one way or another, I know it would help in some cases. I know for myself, I don't really want to see those big buildings going in, but I'm just one person, so I'm more just curious on what's happening there. I had a third point, but seemed to slip my mind, so I'll step back now, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Any more input from public? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, adjourned, thank you all for coming, appreciate it.